Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. The time is now 6:09 PM in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. Item number one is Call to Order. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real-time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Next up, item number two, A Moment of Silence. I'd like to invite everyone who's willing and able to join me to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next up tonight, item number four, Meeting Minutes. Tonight I'll be assisted by Councilmember Hodge. Councilmember Hodge?
I have never done it before, so I now just learned. I move to approve item 4A1.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. And Councilmember Garland? Councilmember Garland, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm an "I."
Okay, thank you. And that item passes seven to zero. Next up is item 4B, Acceptance of Board Commission and Committee Meeting Minutes. Items 4B1 through 4B3. Councilmember Hodge?
Okay, I moved to approve items 4B1 through 4B3.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And Councilmember Navarro?
Yes.
And Councilmember Garland?
Hi.
And that motion also passes seven to zero. Next up, item five, Reports and Announcements. Council, if you'd be willing to join me down at the front, I've got three. The first proclamation I have is for Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and that reads, Teen dating violence is a serious public health problem that is common among adolescents and young adults ages 10 to 24, and is the most prevalent type of youth violence in which approximately 10% of adolescents across the U.S. report being the victim of physical dating violence annually, and only 9% of teen victims report seeking help after their victimization experience. And whereas high school students who witness, experience, or perpetuate physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas educating young people about red flags and root causes of violence, building skills for healthy relationships, and changing attitudes that support violence can help prevent teen dating violence, as can community awareness and providing training for the trusted adults in the lives of adolescents so they may recognize the signs of dating violence and serve as allies for prevention. And whereas nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that incidents of abuse took place at school. And whereas the city of Tempe CARE7 victim advocates and youth specialists are working in our community to educate and support youth and their families, connect them with resources, and assist families through the continuum of care to start the healing process. And whereas the recognition of Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month will benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. And whereas the city of Tempe urges all Arizonans to work toward ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better resources for young people in need, implementing effective intervention and prevention policies in schools, and engaging in discussions with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of teen dating violence. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare February 2023 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona. My second proclamation is for Black History Month, and that reads, Whereas Black History Month became a month-long celebration in 1976 to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans throughout our history. And whereas the month of February is dedicated to the history of Black Americans to include Carter G. Woodson, known as the father of Black history. And whereas despite formal designation of this month-long celebration, struggle and injustice of Black Americans persist, to which we must remain vigilant in acknowledging and addressing the past while illuminating policies that need to be changed as well as inadequate and inequitable programs that need to be overhauled. And whereas organizations such as the AGC Collectors Club, the African-American Advisory Committee, the Tempe Black Employee Alliance, and others have bravely and passionately educated our Tempe community, elevating the rich history, perspectives, and culture of Tempe since 1995, thereby allowing for the ability to hold space for each other at difficult times. And whereas in the off-sided words of Reverend Theodore Parker, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and President Barack Obama, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice." And whereas this month and every month, the city of Tempe shall honor the history of Black Americans and continue to make inclusion, belonging, and equity a priority. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare February 2023 as Black History Month in Tempe, Arizona. And now, Ms. Reese. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to remind you, so we'll do some quick photos afterwards. I know we have some of our CARE7 folks here as well. Want to make sure that they can come up and take some photos, too. But I wanted to make sure to do this one, and then I will bring you on back up. So, thank you for reminding me. I appreciate that. All right. So, Carla, would you like to join us? So, we are sad that Carla Reese, our city clerk, is going to be leaving the city very shortly after many years of dedicated service to the city of Tempe, and we really appreciate her leadership and of all of the key initiatives that we've supported here in the city of Tempe and her constant professionalism that she brought each and every day to this job. I know myself, I started back in July of 2020 as mayor, and I've had a chance to work with Carla for a little over two and a half years, and I've just had a wonderful experience working alongside her every day. She's told me, too, Cory, I'm still going to be remaining a Tempe resident even though I'm moving on to another opportunity, so if I see something I need to call you about, I'm still going to call you because I do have your number. But honestly, Carla, we really appreciate you and all your dedicated service, and we wish you all the best in your next opportunity, but I wanted to read a proclamation for you on behalf of the entire council.
Well, thank you. You're kind.
So, it goes like this. Whereas since April 16, 2019, Carla served as the city of Tempe, served the city of Tempe as city clerk where she promoted public trust and responsiveness in local government. Additionally, Carla R. Reese has been in public service for 28 years, including serving as the Public Safety Communications Manager for the city of Casa Grande, the city clerk, department director, emergency management coordinator for the city of Litchfield Park, special district clerk for the Northwest Fire District, and public safety communications superintendent for the city of Tucson. And whereas Carla has served the city of Tempe community by educating and engaging the public to participate in the democratic process and to have a voice with their elected officials, and cultivating a high-performing and compassionate culture full of thoughtful acts and exceptional service levels provided to internal and external stakeholders. And whereas Carla is a master municipal clerk, certified municipal election official, and state of Arizona certified election officer, and is a longstanding member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association, including her current position on the Executive Board of Directors and participation in numerous statewide committees over the last 13 years. And whereas Carla holds a Bachelor of Science in Legal Studies and a Master of Public Policy with a concentration in law, Carla is a lifelong learner, earning a variety of credentials throughout her service in local government, including Certified Public Manager, Human Resources, SHRM, Senior Certified Professional, Project Management, Change Management Specialist, Public Information Officer, Lean Six Sigma Professional, FEMA Advanced Professional Series, and many others. And whereas in July 2020, Carla was named Clerk of the Year by the Arizona Municipal Clerks Association for the significant contribution she has made in raising the professional status of the municipal clerk profession and for being a shining light during times of stress and uncertainty. And in 2010 was selected as Arizona Public Safety Communications Director of the Year, and in 2011 was a national finalist based on her leadership, public education, outreach to elected officials, and advocacy for improvements to 911 services nationally. And whereas throughout her career in public service, Carla has exemplified servant leadership, where she is always willing to listen and consider input from all stakeholders, research solutions, and continue to grow and develop her skill set, demonstrate empathy, kindness, and compassion in all her interactions, mentor, guide, inspire, and empower her staff, explore and implement innovative ideas and approaches to solve problems, and exhibit professionalism and respect for people at all levels. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare February 3, 2023, as Carla R. Reese Lifetime of Service Recognition Day in Tempe, Arizona.
Oh, thank you. I think the girls included my whole school all in there. Okay. Thank you, Carla.
a few photos as well.
Congratulations.
Oh, thanks for doing that.
Welcome, Chris Charlo.
That is yours.
She does all the work.
I'll go the...
Nick smiles. Three, two, one. Three, two, one. And I'll just smile. I'm not going to count his hands. I'm going to go one, two, three. One, two, three.
All right. Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Keep up your work.
Yeah, I think so. You're right. Yeah.
He did good. That was good. He hugged her.
All right. Next up is item number six, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. Public appearances shall be limited to an aggregate total of 60 minutes. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal and pertinent or slanderous remarks and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served in the order in which the cards were received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. This evening, I have seven cards in front of me, and once again, I will call them in the order received. When you're called, remember, come up, state your name and place of residence, and you'll have three minutes. The first speaker I have this evening is Magdalena Acosta.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Woods, my name is Magdalena Acosta, and I live in Phoenix, Arizona. But I was here last summer, and I'm here again tonight because I spoke to hundreds of voters and collected hundreds of signatures in the city of Tempe voters who believe that the fate of this development should be decided by voters. The voters that signed the referendum petition were exercising their right to provide a check on the city government. It is very upsetting that the city wasted so much taxpayer money fighting for its own voters in court to argue that they should have the only say and that they're not listening to almost 5,000 voters who signed this petition. Tempe City Council should respect the democratic process, listen to the voters, and not pursue another appeal. Enough taxpayer money has been wasted. The South Pier project should be put on the ballot for the next general election. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Morningstar Bloom. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Morningstar Bloom. I'm actually from Los Angeles, California, and be moving to Arizona shortly.
Absolutely. Welcome.
I know, and it's very exciting. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Morningstar Bloom. I'm a researcher with Worker Power. It's reprehensible that not only did the city of Tempe fight to thwart the will of voters with ludicrous claims that the South Pier project could not be referred to voters, but then mere months later turned around and made a deal with the Coyotes developers to refer that project to voters. The city joined the developer in claiming their own form was somehow deficient, an argument which the Court of Appeals has since rejected. Then the city changed their form before they asked the Coyotes to file a referendum. Why is the path forward for developers a red carpet, and it's so hard for city residents to have their voice heard? The outrage I feel from Tempe voters is justified. How can one look objectively at the city of Tempe's actions and not be outraged? By its nature, city government is one of the purest forms of democracy. It's the closest that most people will ever get to their elected officials. As such, the feelings of betrayal cut a little bit deeper. The city of Tempe has a chance right now to move forward and start to regain the people's confidence and trust. The city should let its voters vote, put the South Pier project on the ballot for the next general election. That is the least complicated way forward and spends the least amount of taxpayer money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Teresa Evans. Is Teresa Evans here? Okay. The next speaker is Jewel Valenzuela. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jewel Valenzuela. Again, we're on Tejona Odom, P. Poshland. Just like to acknowledge that also. I agree with them in that I also read today that it will on the ballot, so I'm hoping that this is true, what I read in the newspaper, because we always, as a community, want our voices to be heard because, you know, what I read here, too, like, it says, "South Pier at Tempe Town Lake will breathe new life into the valley. The investment in green space and lush vegetation will transform the desert landscape." You know, our desert is beautiful already. People come from far away to see the Papago Mountains, to see, you know, the stunning sunset and that, and with all these buildings, you can't see this anymore. And of course, we know all the property that's around the lake is very expensive, and so obviously that puts out any affordable housing. When I first moved to Tempe, you could rent a house for $550. That was 2011. Now we're where we're at, and you know what the red is. So, I'm glad that our community will be able to vote, vote on the Coyotes being here. I'm also been a long advocate with Apache Stronghold that has to do with the water, and we already knew three years ago that the water shortage was going to start in North Scottsdale, and that's where it's at. And so, it will eventually find its way here, and so I think that our community needs to look at those things, and what I see here transforming this to green space lush, and it's going to be, you know, water, water, the water that it's going to cost. And then another thing, too, is the giblets. One of the things is when we voted Mark Meyer out as a community, Mark, out as a community, Mark Mitchell, and we voted "in you," it was on the thing that you said that the giblet sis and the giblet sat, sorry, not giblets, giblets, the giblet sis and the giblet sat, that you weren't going to do that, but yet you're doing it. You're doing it, and I don't agree with that at all because our community is great. We're going to make it great again, or what, we're already great. We've been great. And you're just going to make it harder for ASU students. We all know that their cognitive brain is not fully developed till they're 25, their frontal lobe, and that's where you make decisions that go into 10 years of your life. You're going to, lives are going to get ruined with the gambling. They're going to think it's a wise decision, and as an educator, I know that's really important to speak up for them.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is just listed as Mandy. There we go. Please come forward and state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. Just Mandy, that's me. I am a Tempe resident, born and raised, been living in the valley my whole life, been living in Tempe for the last four issues. And frankly, I am appalled at the city's actions. Nearly 5,000 Tempe voters signed a petition so that voters could decide whether the South Pier project was right for our city, and then the city of Tempe then spent months and months fighting us in court. I just don't, I don't get it. Why are you guys fighting us? I really don't, I don't understand. So, now, the Arizona Court of Appeals has ruled in our favor, and the city says they're still deciding on whether to appeal to the Supreme Court. This is an absolute dumpster fire. On the one hand, when a rich developer and a sports team wants to refer a project to the voters, it's fine. The city of Tempe bends over backwards to make that happen, costing taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars to hold a special election. But if the voters use our constitutional rights to say we want to decide on a project, the city spends our taxpayer money to fight us? Tempe, you can't have it both ways. City council has wasted enough taxpayer money already. The South Pier project should be put on the ballot for the next general election. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Andrew Marwick. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. Andrew Marwick, Phoenix. The Coyotes have been in the valley for 27 years. They have not built up a fan base, they haven't won the conference, they haven't won the Stanley Cup, they have a record of losing, it's a pretty bad record of losing, and they've lost probably upwards of a billion dollars in operating losses in the 27 years. One of the ways they cover that is to take long-term injured reserve players who will never play again, concussion syndrome, return to Russia, et cetera, et cetera. Players have to be paid little or nothing based on their contracts, but that counts towards the salary floor. That is not much of a way to build a Stanley Cup-winning team that the Coyotes seem to be claiming they will be doing. After the Coyotes filed bankruptcy, voided out their lease in Glendale, Glendale was left with no relocation protection. They just built the old arena about five or six years earlier. The Coyotes filed bankruptcy, and the NHL took over, what? And the NHL took over, and I kind of lost my track.
Sorry. I'll give you another 30 seconds on top. Don't worry.
Okay. So, the, well, the Coyotes lost a lot of money. They shafted Glendale, and so the NHL paraded out a long list of billionaire owners, sports mogul owners that allegedly, finally, after about five years and half a dozen potential owners, of which the deals fell through each time, they came up with George Gosby, a billionaire oil executive and hedge fund operator from Calgary. Remember, George Gosby, we'll get back to him in a minute here. Then, the ownership group fell apart in about two years. Enter Andrew Barroway. He lasted about three years, and then enter about three years ago, Alex Morello. Well, a little bit more about George Gosby. He had a very, he was not the smooth operator that he was portrayed as. At one point, his wife wrote this book about what happened, and he was trying to get her to come over to his house in Calgary, and I'll read you an excerpt from her book. Coincidentally, my brother Scott called as I was leaving. When I told him where I was going, he made me swing by and pick him up. He wanted to be there in case there was a confrontation. I didn't say anything to him, but I knew in my heart there would be no confrontation. I knew that George was dead. I knew where he was and how he had done it. When I'd gone out on a date, he'd threatened to hang himself. By the time Scott and I arrived at the house, the sun was setting. The front gate was locked, so I circled around to their back. As I approached, I could see George's silhouette through the glass window. He was hanging from the railing of the second-floor balcony. He did it, he did it, he did it. Scott is a doctor. He took one look at George Gosby and knew there was no need for urgency or an ambulance. This was the owner of the Coyotes about five years ago, and this is what happened to him. And I don't think that this is an organization, nothing specifically against Mr. Morello, but this is an organization that has tormented Glendale for the last 20 years, and I don't want to see this continue here in Tempe. Thank you, Mayor Woods.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And the last card I have is from Mackenzie Kephart. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Good evening, city council mayor. My name is Mackenzie Kephart, and I am a newer resident to Tempe, Arizona. I moved here in July, and I'm so happy that I did. This place truly does have one of the most beautiful sunsets I've ever seen, and I grew up on the coast of California. However, I'm a little bit frustrated because I'm learning that despite there being nearly 5,000 signatures indicating that voters wanted to have the South Pier project put on the ballot, the city chose to fight, the city chose to take it to the Court of Appeals, and they're potentially still deciding on if we are going to be allowed to vote or not. When I moved here, I certified my residency as soon as I could because I wanted to be a part of big decisions, and I am learning more about potentially votable items from my friends who do live here, my family who don't live here, and like to call me and tell me what they are learning about my city. It's extremely frustrating because I want to be a part of watching Tempe grow. I want to be a part of seeing Tempe become something even more amazing than it already is.
My name is Mackenzie Kephardt, and I am a newer resident to Tempe, Arizona. I moved here in July, and I'm so happy that I did. This place truly does have one of the most beautiful sunsets I've ever seen, and I grew up on the coast of California. However, I'm a little bit frustrated, because I'm learning that despite there being nearly 5,000 signatures indicating that voters wanted to have the South Pier project put on the ballot, the city chose to fight, the city chose to take it to the Court of Appeals, and they're potentially still deciding on if we are going to be allowed to vote or not. When I moved here, I certified my residency as soon as I could, because I wanted to be a part of big decisions. And I am learning more about potentially votable items from my friends who do live here, my family who don't live here, and like to call me and tell me what they are learning about my city. It's extremely frustrating, because I want to be a part of watching Tempe grow. I want to be a part of seeing Tempe become something even more amazing than it already is. But if the city continues to use my taxpayer money to fight me instead of letting me be a part of the city, I will move on, and I will find bigger, and I will find better, and I will not look back. But again, all we want is to be able to vote on things that we find important to us, things that we believe will change the future of this city, and we want to see this city improve, just like you all do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All right. Before I close that portion of the meeting, I just want to ask before, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council this evening? If so, please get my attention. All right. Seeing none, I will close that portion of the agenda. Mr. City Manager, I realize I skipped over your announcements for 5B. I will go back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any announcements tonight.
All right. Well, that was quick. Next up is item number seven, consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. This evening, the consent agenda is marked as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A4, awards of bids and contracts, item 7B1, and resolutions, item 7C1 through 7C2. Once again, any agenda item designated as public hearing item can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone in the audience would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, were there any comments received from the public?
No, there were not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. And council, any items that you'd like to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, then I will look for the approval of the consent agenda once again, item 7A1 through 7A4. A second? All right, I'm done. I'm going to go here with Councilmember Hodge on the first, and Vice Mayor Adams on the second. There's no abstentions. Councilmember Garland.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. Just give me one second. Oh, I've learned the trash can is now going back here. Ah, there it is, Kara. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Kara.
All right. Next up, item number eight, non-consent agenda. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with the disclosure form. Items 8A, miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. Item A1 is being removed at the request of staff and will be rescheduled for city council consideration at the meeting on February 16th. Therefore, there will be no council vote on this item this evening. Which leads us to the next item, which is item 8A2, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the regional public transportation authority for the lease of the East Valley Bus Operations and Maintenance Facility. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilmember Keating.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. So respectful. Please vote.
Aye.
And that motion passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8A3, which is to award job order construction contract addendum number four to Builders Guild Incorporated, Caliente Construction Incorporated, and Forsight Desite and Construction Incorporated to perform on-call general construction services. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Seconded by Councilmember Chin.
Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for February 16th, 2023. First item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute a lease agreement between the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Valley Incorporated and the city of Tempe for the use of space at North Tempe and West Side Multi-Generational Centers. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right. Want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for February 16th, 2023. The next item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Tempe City Code by amending Articles 4 relating to stormwater retention, by amending Division 1 general provisions, by amending its title, amending Sections 12-57, and repealing Section -59, amending Division 2 administration, and by amending Sections 12-71, 12-72, and 12-73, amending Division 3 standards and specifications, by amending Sections 12-86 and 12-87, adding a new Division 4 compliance monitoring, and adding a new Division 5 enforcement. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? All right. Second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for February 16th, 2023. The last item under the section is 8B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Tempe City Code by amending Articles 6 regarding stormwater pollution control, by amending Division 1 general provisions, by repealing Section 12-116, amending Sections 12-117 and 12-118, adding a new Division 2 administration, including adding a new Section 12-123 and a new Section 12-124, amending the existing Division 2 prohibitions and controls to reduce the discharge of pollutants and stormwater by renumbering it Division 3, and amending Sections 12-127 and 12-128, amending the existing Division 3 compliance monitoring by renumbering it Division 4, and amending the existing Division 4 enforcement by renumbering it Division 5, and amending Section -12-145. Diet Coke break, for the record. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or discussion?
Question on. Can you hear 1, 1, 2, 3, 4?
Was my mic not on? I'll do it again. Once again, I'll do it again on February 16th, 2023, when this item is actually up for adoption. All right, next up, item 8C, ordinances and items for second hearing and final adoption. There are none this evening, which brings us to item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I will call upon the council members for their comments. And first up this evening, I have Councilmember Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I have a slide that's available from my comments. Oh, not that one. We already did the point-in-time one. There should be a new slide that was sent in.
Councilmember Garland, I did not receive a separate slide.
Okay. Well, then I will go on without the slide. The slide was put together for my council aide Paul Smith Leonard, and it was some pictures that were just showing some of the activities that he has participated in and working with our council and our staff members. And is just to say that my aide Paul will be leaving City Hall tomorrow is his last day. He's going to start next week as a communications director for the Arizona Secretary State's Office. I would like to have a talk with Mr. Adrian Fontes about stealing Paul, and he also stole our chief of staff, so I will be having a discussion with him probably next week. But anyway, I've been sick all this week, so I haven't even been able to be in the office to be able to give Paul a big hug. But, you know, I just want to wish him the best. He has been great here at the city. He has been very supportive to me and other staff members and council aides. When we started off, we hit it off really well. We have become really great partners in the office, and I am really going to miss him a lot. But I know that he's not very far, so I'm going to be able to reach out and go see him, hopefully, in his new office. So I just want to say I wish Paul the best to Darren and your kids, and wishing you the best forever. Thank you so much, Paul, for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
I got it.
Oh, you found the slide? Oh. Well, Councilmember Garland, the slide has been found.
Well, there you go.
There it is.
All right. It's just really just a slide to embarrass Paul as much as we can, but it just shows some of the pictures of our staff with him at different events and his beautiful family. Again, I just want to say thank you so much to Paul for everything that he has done. I'm truly, truly going to miss him. So thank you.
Next one. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. And we definitely wish Paul the best. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
On January 28th, I had my breakfast with Verdata. I just wanted to give you a recap. It was the one on financial. And we had, I could not believe it, we had 89 people come that wasn't staff. And we had about 20 staff that came and helped out. I just want to say thank you to all the staff who came and supported it, and it was a great success. It was a lot of people who got a lot of information. We had housing, we had banking, we had our tax from the Tempe, we had FASPA, we had Tempe Connect, we had all of it. So I just want to thank everybody, and also thank Escalante for all the help that they did. And most of all, thank my council aide, Sapan, who puts everything together for me. So thank you, Sapan. Also, we have a award coming up. It's the Dolores Heretta Award Scholarship for a hundred, excuse me, wow, $1,000 to a Tempe Union High School District senior. So if anyone knows any seniors out there that want to apply to it, I have the information. It'll be up on my website. Also, I did, it was last Monday, I did a MLK/Black History keynote at Rio Salada, and it was just, it was about MLK, but it was the women in the movement who helped. And it was, it was a very successful event, and they asked me to do it again. So I guess I must have did kind of a good job. So they, it was a very, very positive event. So thank you. And I also want to just wish everyone a wonderful Black History Month, and also to let everybody know that Black history is everyone's history, so please enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you. Oh, this is mine. This is still mine. Hold on. You have four. I have four.
Oh, Councilmember Hodge.
Okay. I apologize. I just want to say thank you. We had our workforce ready as deliverable communities. I want to thank all of the districts. We had Tempe Union, Kyrene, Tempe L here, and we also had the Tempe Chamber. Thank you so much for attending.
We also had a very, very, very thorough presentation from Dr. Kevin Mendeville. Very in-depth.
45 minutes.
Yeah, it was a good one. I know you guys probably watched it. It's interesting.
I love details.
Yeah. It's on me now? Great, great. I just, I want to talk about Career Ready Tempe. This was actually, Councilmember Arrendondo Savage created this, but I got to work with her on it when she was my former committee co-chair. So I just want to point out that we have some things coming up with the new year rapidly comes, approaching deadlines for students from college/university applications, financial aid, scholarships as well. You know, Tempe's education office and their goals is something that I, and I know Councilmember Verdata, have been proud to carry on in this council, so I wanted to highlight a couple of things in light of the school year dwindling down quickly. Business and student applications for Career Ready Tempe are a program aimed at connecting and developing young professionals with work opportunities and assisting businesses in meeting their needs are both open, businesses through March 15th and students through April 1st. This information is also available on the Career Ready Tempe website at tempe.gov. And of course, College Connect, which also was, Councilmember Arrendondo Savage's, I guess I'll say baby. College Connect is also ready to be utilized for our students, student population who are looking forward to do bigger and better things as we move towards our Achieve 65 goal here in the city. So a lot of exciting opportunities for education in the city of Tempe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Next up, Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little celebration this next week, or week and a half, what, two weeks here, Super Bowl. But we have our little party here at Tempe Beach Park. We're going to have The Killers actually be performing on February 10th in the FanDuel Beach Party right here at Tempe Beach Park. Like I said, it's going to be February 10th. Tickets are on sale now, or you can get them on FanDuel by receiving free tickets if you tried to bet on one of these former great athletes. They're going to do a variety of tailgating games, and you get to protect the winners out of those games, like Gronkowski, Shannon Sharp, Darius Butler, and a few others will be there. So it's kind of, it kind of sounds like a great event, because it sounds like it's going to be a lot of fun. I enjoy The Killers. I hope you guys do too. One of the things that we enjoy about Tempe is the live music, and here's just another little piece of that performance that we cherish so much here at Tempe Beach Park. So please, if you guys have a chance, try to come on down. And then, big thanks to Paul. I know he's moving on to bigger and better things. He was a great partner in our staffing for our committee, and I appreciate his work, and much success with him going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Next up, Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's kind of nice not having to go first every time. I could get more time to get ready for my announcements. I appreciate that.
So do we.
Good, Joel. I'm glad you're happy, because that's what's most important, is that you're happy, Joel. All right. So I'm calling out all volunteers. Do you have some free time on your hands and love children? Then join Tempe's AARP Foundation Experience Corpse Program and volunteer to tutor some of our Tempe schoolchildren. Tempe's program focuses on early literacy skills and is designed to provide support to struggling Tempe Elementary School District students. What was that, Joel?
U of A. We're talking about Gronkowski.
Oh, U of A, okay. Since 2006, this program has helped more than 3,000 at-risk students reach grade-level reading benchmarks. And due to its longtime success, the Tempe program now serves as a national model, and it's very well-known throughout the country. I had the privilege of participating in the program, and it was really, it was really fun to watch the kids get things and really improve their reading skills. And volunteers don't need special skills, just a willingness to share your experience, time, and patience. And we provide you with comprehensive training and support services, so you don't have to ever do anything, if you've never done anything like this, you're all good. They'll give you all the training you need. Students become more proficient in their reading, they show increased self-confidence from tutors who motivate and encourage them, and the generational exchange allows children to succeed, and adult tutors to thrive, making communities stronger. You have six opportunities to make it to one of our informational sessions this spring, and they're all at the Tempe Public Library located at 3,500 South Rural Road. And I had the pleasure of working with Peggy Goldberg, who heads this program many, many years ago, and she's such a wonderful person, and she's done a great job with this program. So I would really encourage, it's really a win-win situation for adults and for children, so I'd really encourage you to join up in that. And my next, there it is, Flower Power Park. The corner of Seventh Street and Mill Avenue is now home to a temporary park. Thanks to sponsors of Core Spaces and Tempe Tourism, the downtown Tempe Authority team was able to turn a dirt lot into a temporary beautification project. And those that haven't seen it, it is really cool. It's just, it's exactly what we're trying to do to our downtown. The city of Tempe donated some uncycled painted trash containers for planters. Gravel was added. M Design enhanced the space with some beautiful park signage. Creative Dreams Capes provided landscape designs with lighting and plants for all the containers, and bistro tables were added to complete the look. The overall fun, colorful design is all tied together with some fence art done by local artist Rebecca Ross. It's become a great space for anyone to soak up the winter sun, take a rest, and enjoy carryout from your nearby restaurants. The project started around October of 2022 and finished up with community events hosted by Rebecca during the Fall Festival of the Arts and December Secondary Sunday events. Ross set up a workstation and encouraged Mill Avenue patrons to be part of the magic and add a flower to the fence themselves. Currently, the flower ark is out of commission but will be hopefully returning in late February. Currently, the flower arc is out of commission but will be hopefully returning in late February. Thank you. That ends my announcements to save you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, mayor. I just have trash talk tonight. As you may be aware, and I'd like to remind you all, that the city of Tempe offers bulk and uncontained trash collection. The schedules have gone out to all residents. If you would like to check your schedule online, visit tempe.gov/bulktrash. Thank you, mayor.
Vice Mayor, yes?
Yes, just want to comment on the bulk trash. Please have your thing, your items out the day that, the first day that it's coming, because sometimes they come early the first morning, and people have been missing it. So just want to add that to Councilmember Chin's astute presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I was expecting some real trash talk from Councilmember Chin.
That's what I was going to say. I was going to say, no one talks trash.
Maybe for the next meeting, I guess so.
No one talks trash more than Councilmember Chin.
I had a donut come back all lined up, too.
Wow. Love it. Well, with that, I don't have any comments, so then I'll move into item number 10, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council? If so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record. Seeing none, I will move on here to the next item, adjournment. The next meeting is scheduled for February 16th, 20... Yeah, next meeting is scheduled for February 16th, 2023, and we are adjourned at 7:00 PM on the dot.